Well, good morning, everyone. We'll go ahead and get started. A copy of the Open Meetings Act is located on the north wall of the legislative chambers. There's also an automatic external defibrillator which is available on the back wall of the legislative chamber. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll begin with the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Equalization. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Kraft, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Commissioner Tusha, Madam Chair.
Here. Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, March 25, 2014. And item B, call for a meeting and set Tuesday, April 8, 2014, as a date for hearing on certified assessment corrections reflecting the addition of omitted property to the tax roll or increased value on property.
Motion approved.
Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Okay. Now you try and...
Motion passes.
Citizen comments? Is there anyone in the chamber wishing to speak to the Board of Equalization about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move to resolutions. There are four resolutions.
We can...
No, that's county board. Do you want the equalization, Board of Equalization?
Oh, no. We're just, uh, wait. Are you, are you just gonna comment? Is there a public...
Yes, at the county board, yep, agenda?
Yes.
Yes. When we go into the county Board of Commissioners' agenda, that's when, and I say that, that's when you'll come up.
Perfect.
Okay, perfect.
Motion approved and adjourned.
Any questions or comments? Please vote. We'll move to the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Commissioners. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Kraft, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Commissioner Tusha, Madam Chair.
Here. Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners' meeting held Tuesday, March 25, 2014. Item B, approval of claims submitted for payment process through Tuesday, April 1, 2014.
Motion approved.
Second. Any questions or comments? Please vote. Next is the consent agenda, seven items, A through G.
Motion approved.
Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes.
Next is recognition and proclamations. There's one, there's a resolution declaring April as National County Government Awareness Month with the 2014 theme of ready and resilient counties, prepare, respond, and thrive.
Motion approved.
And I'll also just quickly run off the activities thus far that we have planned beginning today is we will send out our annual Did You Know facts about county government. If you remember, each one of those is a fact about our departments and offices within county government. Those are distributed widely through the media, hung on bulletin boards, in libraries. And then, we're doing tours this year. Every Wednesday of the month, there will be a tour at the Douglas County Health Center at 10 and 1. The maximum number per group is 15, and though, you have to reserve your time by calling our office and talking to Chi. And then, on Thursdays, every Thursday in April, there'll be a tour at Corrections and a tour at the Youth Center, again, at 10 and at 1, but the maximum number, again, per group is 15. We will have a presentation dealing with a, what our EOC is, what our Emergency Management Department does, again, more along with the theme for this year. It'll be a presentation on April 14, Monday night at 7, at Extension Office. After Paul Johnson does the presentation about what is emergency management and what is our response, we're gonna have a panel of every county department that is involved when there is a disaster, and they'll each speak to what their role and responsibility is. And again, that'll be at Extension, and we'll be sending out more information on that.
That's 14.
The 14th.
Yeah.
At Extension at 7.
7 o'clock.
And we will have a employee night at Horseman's Park on April 26, again, this year. That was very successful. It's, whoever wants to come can have dinner, enjoy an evening of social events. We had a county Jeopardy game competition last year that was a lot of fun, and so we're still planning that, but that's Saturday, April 26. And then, lastly, we tried to get a, each mall to allow us to do a table exhibit or an exhibit within the mall area, and Crossroads has graciously agreed to donate space up in their courtyard for a display, as well as put us in lights on their marquee on 72nd and Dodge. So Marcos is working up the message about April being County Government Awareness Month and where to get additional information. That'll be up in lights the entire month. Our display will be, for two weeks, for two weeks. And then, our display in the mall will be in two weeks once we're finished with that. So we have a lot of good things happening, and again, the emphasis of this is not only to build awareness, which, by the way, the county employees, if they're wanting to take tours of any of those facilities, we welcome that as well, because as we're finding out, even within our walls, a lot of us don't understand what the other one does. And so, this would be a good opportunity to go take a look at the Health Center, Corrections, or Youth Center. And again, spread the word, if you would, as commissioners, to your contingencies that you know. Again, that's taking place all Wednesdays and Thursdays in April. So, with that, please vote. Is there anyone in the chamber wishing to speak to the Board of Commissioners about an item not on the agenda? That would be you.
Hello.
Good morning.
Obviously, this is my first Board of Commissioners meeting. My name's Katie Heil, and I have lived in Omaha, really, for the majority of my life. The reason that I am here today is on behalf of Vance Phillips and her grandson, Giovanni Phillips. And it has been brought to my attention, really, a systemic problem within NFC. They have really failed Giovanni Phillips and this family. From what I understand, there are going to be staff changes, 'cause really, what I was originally gonna speak about today was the absolute gross misconduct of Yolanda Brown, who is Giovanni's caseworker. And even aside from all that, I am requesting that Yolanda, Yolanda Brown is fired, removed from her position because of all the misconduct that has been brought to my attention. I know that there have been other people that have spoken about this particular case here, but I'm here to let you know that there are, more and more of the public are starting to get to know Giovanni Phillips is a face to, on a systemic problem that is very much coming to light. And like I said, more and more people are knowing it. So, what I found out this morning is that there, it seems that all of Giovanni, Giovanni's caseworker is getting removed, as well as basically his entire team. There were documents that were lost that were miraculously found before this meeting. So, we've got staff change and documents that are found. Well, nobody's contacted Vance Phillips, and that is not a good start. This family has been traumatized. I have met Giovanni, and what this poor child has had to deal with, living in the system and being criminalized, basically, as a child, and that is unacceptable. So, again, I am concerned that Vance Phillips has not been notified of this staff change. So, again, I am requesting that Yolanda Brown be removed, because she has shown that she is completely incompetent as a caseworker and does not have the best interests of children in mind. And the same with her supervisor, Matt. I do not have his last name right now. I apologize for that. But yes, again, more of the public is starting to see, really, the problems that are happening within, well, everywhere, really. I know that many of you have seen me elsewhere. But really, this is children. We are criminalizing children, and that is unacceptable. We are traumatizing children, and that is not okay. And what Vance Phillips needs most is also an attorney, because what has taken place here, honestly, NFC and DHS, they need to be sued. And so, that's another thing that I am requesting, is that, I mean, Vance needs help. She needs support. She doesn't need to be threatened, which she has been. She has been. And again, that is just totally, totally unacceptable. So, and another thing that, there was a restriction that was made on Melanie Smotherman and James Holt and Laura Dern, and I found out that that has been lifted, too. So, we are kind of waiting to see what's gonna happen. But again, we are watching, and this is something that has got to change. So, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much for coming forward.
My name's Danny Grupo. It's my first time here as well. I have been kicked out of this room many times before, though, at City Hall meetings. They don't like me too much. I was asked to be here on behalf of Giovanni and Vance Phillips. I'm not here to talk about them, though. I kinda wanna tell you guys a little of what I've been up to over the past two years. First of all, I've been really pushing for police oversight. I've said it repeatedly, that a police department without citizen oversight starts to look a lot like the Gestapo. This is history. If you don't study history, I recommend it, 'cause it's, that's the honest truth. So, I went to a town hall meeting, and Jean Stockther was there, and I asked her, you know, how come you've been ignoring us? 'Cause she does ignore us. And she told me she disagrees with me. Frankly, I don't really care if she disagrees with me. It's her job to listen to me regardless. I pay her wage. Last time I was at the mayor's office, actually, I went with Katie, we were greeted by armed undercover agents and intimidated out of the office without being able to fill out a meet with, meeting request with the mayor form. I've been working with a lady named Sadie Bankston, who had some land donated to her nonprofit Pulse. There were $4,000 due in back taxes when she got the land. That went up to 6,000, even though it was a nonprofit that now held it. The city took that away. We are planning to start a community garden there. We're going to start a community garden on that land regardless of who actually owns it, because, you know, that's dumb. It's really, really, really stupid, especially when that Walmart that just opened on 50th and Ames, they got two and a half million freaking dollars from the city. Corporate welfare, but we're stealing money from elderly people with MS who run nonprofits to help the community. That's, that's real stellar right there. Another person I've been dealing with is a man named Kevin Tucker. He goes to Bryan, he went to Bryan High School. He had his head slammed into the, the front door by the school resource officer who works there. OPS has repeatedly changed and ignored their rules to try and marginalize Kevin and his support network. Kevin was supposed to stay in school until his expulsion hearing. He was kept out. He was not allowed to receive his homework, so he now has a month, a packet of homework from a month that the school did not give to him while he was out. And Kevin, I think, really points out the problem, because we have, I have called, like, 15 different people who work for OPS, and I have gotten replies from two of them, and both of them told me outright they couldn't help. And that kinda brings us back to Giovanni. There is a systematic failure on all levels of our government. Every time I have engaged a government official, they have done nothing but waste my time and piss me off. And it's, I'm done. I have no use for the, the government of Omaha, Nebraska, the US. I have no use. They do nothing but waste my time. So, really, I just wanna say, there's corruption in this city. Like, there is rampant corruption, and I'm calling that out. I'm gonna start advocating for people to just start doing the solution themselves, take the law into their own hands. This is not a threat, but the truth, there is no use. Like, there, there has not been any use. There's not been any facilitation. There has not been any problem solving from any of our elected officials. And I just wanna reiterate again, this is not a threat I'm making, because the people who are in office are the ones threatening me. They have the guns, they have the police force, they have the NSA. So, it's time to start getting stuff together, and it's time to start firing people and putting people on trial for treason, because that's what I see here. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you very much for coming down and talking to us this morning. And just, as I, I think you know already that, Commissioner Boyle isn't here, but both him and I have been involved with that case, and we're working hard to address a lot of the issues that you talked about. So, thank you. The, next is the presentation, and it is an update on outstanding annual retail food permits by our health director, Dr. Adi Por.
Good morning, Board members. Adi Por, Douglas County Health Department. And I brought with me the supervisor of our food and drink section, Joe Garb, to answer the difficult questions that you are gonna pose to me. But I want to talk to you a little bit about the process. So, in the middle of December, we actually sent out invoices to all of our food businesses that have permits with the Douglas County Health Department to lay out to them that their invoice, that their permits are due, they need to be paid until January 15. There were about 2,387 permit holders that got sometimes more than one permit to have to be paid. There was a self-addressed envelope enclosed with that bill, and many of them, I would have to say, the majority of them, really have done a great job paying their bills. But by February 21, we had to send out a second notice. The second notice went out to 400 businesses who hadn't paid their invoices for their permits and therefore were under the law having a business without a permit. We also added a $100 late fee at that time, again, added a self-addressed envelope that individuals could use to send in their late fee. On March 11, we had 203 businesses that had not paid their invoices for their permits, and our food and drink staff called each of those businesses, 203, make a courtesy call, informed them again that under the law, they were now running a business without a permit. Now, it is April 1, and as of yesterday, 3:00 PM in the afternoon, we still have 29 businesses that are now operating without a permit. And this is the information you have in front of you. What you can see there is there are many different type of businesses. 13 of them are what I would consider bars or lunches that really only have a drink permit. 10 of them are restaurants. Some of them have a restaurant and actually another, a special facility, or they have a bakery attached to the restaurant, or they have a catering license in addition to the restaurant license. That's why you see some differences in the cost there. We have four retail stores on that list. We have one food processing and one food warehouse on the list. Now, I have to tell you, the food warehouse has told us yesterday that the check is in the mail, so there could be some slight adjustments there, but we have to put a, a date to it. So, that is where we are today, April 1. 29 businesses still are operating in the city of Omaha without a permit.
Dr. Por, do you have, on the sheet, it says area. Do you have the map that shows the area?
I don't have a map, but what, what that means is that those are the areas that our food inspectors go out to. And what that shows you is it's across the city. It's not one specific area where all of them are. There are like, I think we counted them up, like, seven in North Omaha, eight in South Omaha, and then the west is more in the western part of the city. So, they are across. We are not talking about one group of businesses in one certain area of the city.
And the first notice was sent out, when did you send it?
The first notice, the letter went out on December 13. The first notice of delinquency went out February 21, and the courtesy phone call was made March 11.
And so, now, the, they're basically getting notice that they're shut down until their permits are paid, correct?
Yeah. Well, the next, the next step would now be to close these businesses down.
Okay. And, and it would be all of them, correct?
It would be all of them, yes.
Okay. And, and we've only heard from one off of this list?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Commissioner Tusha?
Thank you for this. First of all, when will these businesses start being closed down immediately, or, and I know you're probably limited on staff, so it'll probably take a couple of days. Am I correct?
Well, and you know, we need to make an internal decision. Usually, last year, for example, we didn't take a police officer with us. However, we are thinking that this time, we may want to have a police officer to write a ticket, actually, with us.
Okay.
And so, we need to kind of work with the Omaha Police Department and see what works for them.
Okay. Will there be an additional fine on that ticket?
Well, what, there will be a fine. They will have a court date, and there will be a fine. There is a fine up to $500 each day.
Seriously?
Or six months in prison, yes.
Whoa. Okay. On these late fees, now, is this just a one-time late fee, or, and I think we discussed this during the committee meeting, but if you could refresh my memory, is this a one-time late fee, or are we doing this on monthly, or how are we doing that?
Up to now, we only had a one-time late fee. And that's what you see on here. Now, you know, we may be thinking of changing that in the future or so on, but at this time, it's a one-time, $100 late fee.
Now, are some of these, which I'm sure they are, are they repeat offenders?
You know, that is difficult, and Joe is saying no. There are different businesses from last year, so those who last year got the last call probably came in and, and sent in their, their payments earlier.
Okay. Well, I was gonna say, if there are late offenders, then we need to look at that differently, but then again, if they're not, okay. Thank you, Adi. I appreciate this.
Dr. Por, when your notices go out, do they go out, like, first on health department letterhead, then is the next one on a different letterhead, or is there a county attorney involved like we do with some of our environmental stuff?
Now, you know, the first one goes out on letterhead, just a normal letter with the permit attached to it that they need to pay with the invoices for the permit. The next one is also on letterhead, but it has notice of delinquency written broad on top, so that it kind of...
Catches.
Makes, makes the people aware that this is a different letter. And then, the phone call, you know, the phone call is really made by the inspectors who inspect those businesses, so they know who the manager is, they know how to talk to the right people, they don't just make a cold call and talk to somebody who probably isn't aware about paying bills.
And we, we have documentation of being, having a phone conversation...
Yes.
...with each of these?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Tusha?
I have one other question. It's a couple of these, and I, I can't say for sure, but a couple of these might be, you know, have their home office in different areas, and that, you know, they're, they're a franchise, is what I'm trying to think.
Correct.
Do you send it to the franchise company, or do you send it to the actual restaurant area?
We send it to the people who are on the permit.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. No other questions or comments? I appreciate the update, and again, I mean, I don't know what more or additional steps we can take to, I mean, you've done everything you possibly can, and so, I guess we just wait and see where the chips fall with this. So, if you could just keep us updated, though, that would be greatly appreciated.
I will do that, in my highlights, in my weekly highlights. I will keep you updated.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming. Anyone else wishing to comment on this issue? Seeing none, we'll move to committees, the first one being the Finance Committee. Commissioner Morgan and Duda, you have anything for the budget report?
I don't think there's anything as presented.
Okay. There's a resolution approving and adopting post-issuance compliance procedures for tax-exempt or other tax-advantaged governmental bonds brought by our finance director, Joe Lorenz.
Yeah, that's just a resolution. As you know, we just refinanced two issues, and when we were working with our bond councils from Q-Tech Rock and Baird Home, they both recommended that we put in a formal post-issuance compliance policy. And so, it's just a short, three or four-page document about some things that we have to do from a compliance standpoint for our outstanding municipal bonds.
Okay.
Motion approved.
Sorry. Any questions or comments? Please vote. Just a note that the Child and Youth Services meeting for today has been canceled. We will reconvene that next month. Human Resources, there's a weekly personnel report from civil service as presented. If there are no questions or comments. There's, item two, weekly CAC report on staff assaults.
Nothing to report.
Okay. Item three, legislative issues. The couple of them are, it'll be 464, which was a juvenile kind of cleanup issue bill, and the truancy bill that passed 48 to nothing yesterday, so we felt, or the amendment to it passed yesterday, so we felt pretty good about that. The, we did find out that the, when I spoke yesterday at the Board of Trustees about the $10 million for behavioral, and there was also developmental disability dollars that were vetoed as well. But both of those were put on the list through, from the Appropriations Committee and kicked out, so, at an eight to one vote, so we felt very good about that.
So, now, we wait and see if they can get 30 votes?
No, it'll go, yeah, but now we, now we work to make sure we have the senators' contacts that we have in order for that to happen, and actually, you want a few more, just in case anything catastrophic happens, but we will, we'll be talking to everybody on that one. But I feel pretty good about it, that it came out of the Appropriations Committee and made the list. Commissioner?
15, I mean, 10 is five short of what you could call, but everybody's still...
Right. We actually tried to get all of it back in, and that didn't occur, so, I mean, we're happy with what we can get, but everybody needs to know that we did not see the savings, even with the $5 million being taken away, so there, there could be some adjustments that need to be made, but if we could get 10 of the 15 back, we would be very happy with that.
Yes.
And so, I think that's all. They're almost finished, so we'll see what the last few days have stored for us. We do have need for executive session for...
Labor Relations, no litigation, Labor Relations and Real Estate Negotiations. No, I'm sorry, no Labor Relations, it's shocking to hear, but no Labor Relations, just Real Estate Negotiations.
Okay, is there a motion to go into executive session? Please vote. And again, the Child and Youth Committee Meeting is canceled at 1:00. The County Government Awareness Committee does meet at 3:00 in Room 903. At 2:15, yep. Okay.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Don't do your job. So, technically, that will not require a captain. Those are... That's somebody that I give... Hurricane. So, that's somebody that I have a lot of huge favor, really. So, when I command... I can hire a house, yes. I was trying to do all of the training, every CPR, CPR, all of them. Yeah, I let it go. I've been talking to you, but one time, I was... Right. Yeah, I let it go. I've been talking to you, but one time, I was... That's what I'm, I'm a very good person, so. All right, all these court guys, we're gonna be busy on the way next couple of days. Erica's doing things, and, yeah. Well, Miko tomorrow, Erica should be Thursday maybe induced, so. My best should be trying to somehow get on her. Okay. Cindy, how are you?
I'm good, thanks.
All business.
Good. Do you want to do a special assignment? Sure, what is it?
Cindy, I think you're good to go. I appreciate you coming.
Sweet.
Joe, if something happens at 2:15, I'll see you. Otherwise, don't worry about it, okay?
Motion passes.
Thank you, dear.
Thank you.
From sea to shining sea.